Hello friends and welcome. Today's session is an energy work session. Using crystals and correspondences to create a connection to the star Sirius, the Sirius gateway and our spiritual self. Every year in July, our sun, our being aligns with the star Sirius, our spiritual self in the sign of Cancer. This session has been designed to ground calm and release any unwanted energies. Making room for these nourishing, energizing, galactic energies. Embracing their subtle and empowering illuminations. To awaken a deeper level of our spiritual being, our spiritual awareness and our spiritual journey. If that sounds good, let's begin. We're going to begin by setting our intention and cleansing our surroundings, our being. My intention for today's ASMR Reiki healing energy work session is to create a safe and protected space to allow us to release the energies we wish to no longer carry, which are no longer serving us, and any other energetic debris. To make room for fresh, new, more aligned energies to enter our being for our highest good. To aid us in tapping into embracing and encouraging galactic energies from the Sirius gateway. The alignment, the conjunction of our sun with this star. Focusing particularly on our spiritual being, our spiritual self. If you would like to add a specific intention for yourself, do so now. We're going to use this positive vibes incense to cleanse our space, our energetic body and to ground us in our being for the session of it. Allow the incense to permeate through your being. Grounding you in this moment. Allowing a connection between yourself in this moment and the crystal proxy in front of you. Representing our energy work with Sirius today. Allow yourself to take a moment to release any of the burdens you may carry from your day. Allow those unwanted energies, those thoughts, the feelings and emotions to be blown away. Sirius is also known as the dog star. It is the brightest star located in the Canis Major constellation to the left of Orion's belt. This constellation is one of Orion's hunting dogs. This star has long been revered by ancient cultures. And it's rising in the northern hemisphere. Coinciding with the rising sun and the summer heat has given this time of year many names associated with this star. The dog days of summer, the days of the dog star. Dog days referring to the heat. For during the forty days that Sirius rises during the day along with our sun. As the sun moves away from this star's place in its constellation is the peak of summer in the northern hemisphere. These ancient cultures associated the rising of this star with the rising sun and the heat of summer as being connected. This star has been associated with goddesses of fertility, abundance and motherhood. With dogs, the hounds and hunts. The heat and intensity of summer for hundreds if not thousands of years past. These aspects are all correspondences of Sirius in its many forms. In modern astrology, Sirius is associated with our spiritual self. And this gateway, this alignment of the sun with the star Sirius is believed to awaken us in new levels or to new levels or new awakening on our spiritual self to open us up to new spiritual ways. To a new level of seeing, of understanding, of being, of connection. It is a creative infinite energy amplified by our sun, by our being that connects our intuition with creation. Warming our being and our desires, our mind and emotions and our spiritual beliefs and ideas. Activating a whole new illumination of our authentic self and shifting us along our path of growth. Oftentimes, these shifts are extremely subtle. And we do not see their connection and association until we're reflecting. Maybe you'll notice that this time of year you make choices to step into your empowered self to connect back into your spiritual practice and the world around you. As we've seen through history and culture, the associations of this star bearing similarities in themes and aspects. This allows us to work with these themes and aspects with this star's energy amplified energy at this time. Right now I'd like you to focus on your breath. With each inhalation drawing in healing awakening energy deepening with each repetition of the cycle. And on each release, blowing out that energy, those resistances, anything that is no longer serving you. With each stage of the cycle, you allow the unwanted energies to be removed from your being, from your bodies and all their forms. Releasing tension, blockages and stagnation that may not allow your energies to flow in their most abundant form. As we release, we align and draw in those energies that will better serve us. That will help us step into our next aspect of being. The alignment of self. The alignment of being. The alignment of our beliefs, of our spiritual self, of seeing a world around us as it is in all its aspects. Drawing in a piece of knowing who we truly are. With the abilities to express ourselves creatively in all its forms. Allowing the energies from Sirius and its companion star and the gateway created by our sun's alignment to awaken our intuition, our heart. And call in our spiritual allies, our spiritual companions, our spiritual guides. To aid us in healing, to aid us in awakening, to aid us in our growth. Drawing in a grounded intuition that will feed our soul. Drawing in unconditional love for ourself and being. Drawing in unconditional love for all around us in all its forms. Drawing in the beauty of the world and its energies around us. Drawing in anything you may need in your physical form. Drawing in anything you might need in your spiritual form. Drawing in anything you might need in your emotional and mental forms. Drawing in any galactic, universal energies that this gateway is bringing for your alignment of being, spirit and soul. Allowing these energies to enter your being in all forms. Allowing the healing energies of our heart and soul. The healing energies of our spiritual growth. Healing energies in all their forms. Our illuminations and our perspectives from the heart. Our illuminations and our perspectives from our minds. Our illuminations and our perspectives in all their forms. Our abundance and our resources. Our abundance and our resources. Our abundance and our resources. Allowing the energies of the gateway to nourish our mind, body and soul. Nourish our spiritual growth. Nourish us in all our forms. Awakening a new alignment. Awakening a new perspective. Awakening a new spiritual form. Awakening our third eye. Our intuition, our inner guidance system. Awakening our perspectives. The new ways we choose to view and grow. Awakening our expressions, our voice, our will. Awakening our heart. Our unconditional love, our acceptance of all. Opening our creativity, our abundance. Our creative desires. Opening our passions, our flame, our sensuality and expression of self. Opening up our stability, our foundation, our security, our roots and allowing a new alignment for our highest good. Whatever we need in this moment. Whatever we need from this connection with the star and the sun above. Whatever we need from these crystals. And their spirits, their crystal spirits, their crystal allies. Their correspondences and representations. Allowing this connection to gently guide us. To ground us in our being. To ground us in our spirit. And to guide us to this next connection of self. Allowing the messages of this portal, this gateway to enhance and grow and heal and support us in all our forms. To close our session, we are going to allow the sacred smoke of this ancient tree to bless our energies and all that has been called in from our universe around us. Sealing our energetic body and its alignment, its balance, its flow for our highest good in this moment and the next. Connecting us energetically within ourselves and our being and within our place in the world and universe around us. Knowing that we can draw in any energies we require in this moment. That we can find alignment in all its forms. Knowing that you can draw any of these aspects and qualities from within yourself, from within the universe around you. Alignment and balance. By aligning and balancing, we can focus on the next steps that we take on our spiritual path. I hope that you are feeling calm. I hope that you are feeling empowered and illuminated. I hope that you enjoyed this session. Until the next time. Goodbye my friends.